Oh, senior advisor. See, that's really big when you get to be a senior advisor.
No junior advisor.
Right. That's right. No junior advisor. Anyway, it's gonna lead us in the pledges, so if y'all would give them your kind attention.
Let us pray. Gracious heavenly Father, we thank you for the many, many blessings that you have given us. We thank you for the opportunity to live in this country, a country of freedom where we are free to worship, a country where we are free to come here, engage with our government, Lord, to learn and to voice our opinions. God, we also thank you for the opportunity of giving us more than we deserve. You have blessed us far beyond what we deserve in the way we act, in the way we believe, in the way we speak. We ask tonight that you would help us to have wisdom, give us eyes to hear and ears to hear, excuse me, and that you would give us wisdom as we listen, give us wisdom as we ask questions, give us insight. Lord, we pray for Congressman Moran as he represents us and does his best. We ask that you would give him wisdom as he goes to Washington to represent this district and to fight for freedom and to keep us safe. I pray for those men and women who are serving abroad, that you would keep them safe and bring them home safely. I pray also right now for the Texas House and Senate as they are in session, that you would keep them from going astray, that you would keep them passing the right kinds of bills and killing the wrong kinds of bills, Lord. In Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Pledge allegiance to the U.S. flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Now the state flag. Honor this Texas flag. I pledge allegiance to thee, Texas, one state under God, one and indivisible.
Thank you. Okay, I see that some of you all, I noticed, had already written your questions on cards. And so, Mary Ann, if we need some additional cards, we want to be ready for that. Anybody that's already got your questions pre-filled out, you may, Mary Ann and some of the others are gonna pick up the cards and I will start going through them. So now, let's talk about a couple of things here. Some of you are new and haven't been to one of our meetings before, but we're glad that you're here. So, here are the rules. You absolutely can ask any question that you want to ask. You have to write—Joanne Fleming. Thank you. This is about what we do. It's not about me, but thank you for asking. I forget sometimes that not everybody knows me. I've been around a while. Anyway, so what we want to do is make sure that we have order and decorum. I am big on order and decorum. And so, to help us with that, sir, my order and decorum. And you know why? Because I pay—I write the check to pay for the room. Yeah. When—okay, okay, let me—let 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 me just—no, I'm not gonna engage with you like that, okay? Now, I'm gonna tell you right now. Let me finish what I was gonna say. We have security here, and if anybody decides they want to be out of order and you didn't leave your crazy at home, they'll help you leave. Okay? So, I want us to have a good discussion here tonight, a good discussion. And not everybody has to agree, right? Not everybody has to agree because I believe in free speech, even if I don't like the speech I'm hearing. Free speech is important, a fundamental principle of our society. It just is. And we need to honor that. And so, we're gonna honor that in an orderly way so that we can make sure that as many questions as possible can be asked and the congressman can answer them. So let me tell you how we've done these town halls before is if you have a question that he needs to do a little research on. For example, there might be a bill pending in Congress that maybe he's not on a particular committee that that bill originates from and will be handling that bill first. And so, if he needs to do some research, he's—we're gonna take your question and Mr. Senior Advisor back there will make sure that the congressman puts out the answers to those questions. He always does that. He's very good at doing that. So that's how we're gonna handle this. So if you have your questions ready, for the volunteers who are gonna pick up cards, please go ahead and hand your cards in. And so, if we have, say, a ton of questions on what in the world's gonna happen to Social Security, well, if we've got 15 questions on the same thing, I will probably just ask that question one time, okay? If they're different questions, yes, indeed. If it's a different question, I will look for the differences and I will ask those questions. I absolutely will. And I can tell you that the congressman is always happy to stay here as long as he needs to, to answer questions. And so, we do that every time we have a town hall with the congressman because it's important that you get to ask him the questions that you need. So, I went over the security. And so, you have meeting handouts that have some of the upcoming events. And the one on May the first is important to a lot of people. And that is, we're gonna have somebody in here that will teach you how to protest your property appraisals, okay? And he goes into great detail about how you go about collecting the information that you need to go hopefully have a success at the appraisal district to get your appraisal lower so that your property taxes are lower. And so, he is a tax professional, and it doesn't cost you a thing. We would welcome you to come in and get some training on how you can help yourself lower your property taxes, because I'm not really sure that those folks in Austin are gonna get any of that done. So, on the legislative session, we have 40 days left. Forty days left in this session. So for those of you that were paying attention to the priorities that the voters voted for on those primary ballots, it will be interesting to see how many of those are delivered. I will say this about school choice. School choice is not what most people think it is. The bill has a lot of poison. There's a lot of poison in that bill, and I think some people are gonna be very shocked to find out exactly what happened with that. Because I'm gonna tell you, the one thing the people of Texas all want is they want their children to be well-educated. They just want children to be well-educated and to have an opportunity to have the best life possible, whatever career they might choose. And so, anything that doesn't hold the system accountable for doing that and to fund that appropriately, then it sets up failure for our teachers and it sets up failure for students. So I would just invite y'all to look into the details of that as they start coming out. And I'll tell you that I think the bill could have been much improved. I don't think there's as much freedom in that bill as people might try to say is in the bill. And I also believe that some people think they're gonna be eligible for the bill, for the ESAs, that they will not be eligible for them. And I think there's gonna be great disappointment. So, the devil, as they say, is always in the details, and I guess everybody will find out about that when they go to apply. So tonight, with your handout, I would direct your attention to the pages that Congressman Moran submitted. And they focus on his committee assignments, of course, the Tax Writing Committee, the Ways and Means Committee, and what they're doing. And it's really quite interesting. And I ask him to be sure that we focused and concentrated on the substance of the work that the Ways and Means Committee is doing and also the Select Committee on Chinese—the Chinese Communist Party and limiting their influence in our government. And we won't even talk about the House Committee on Ethics. I just—we just—I don't think we have time even for that. But anyway, I would like for us to be able to focus on the things that are really important here to the people of Texas. And I don't want us—for the part that you and I engage in, we won't worry about the palace intrigue. The palace intrigue and what's going on in Washington is not nearly as important as what is happening in those tax writing committees. Thank you. Okay, so I would ask you to do one last thing, and that is to check your phones and make sure your phones are muted, please. Be a good neighbor to those sitting around you. Okay, Congressman, so if you—so now, again, you have these cards. And if your cards, as soon as I hand over the microphone to Congressman Moran, I will come by and pick up your cards if you've already got your questions. And then we will take more questions throughout the evening. Say thank you, Congressman, for being here. I bet you're glad to be back in Texas.
Absolutely.
Okay.
Hey, good evening, everybody. So glad to be here with you tonight. I think I got around to most of you before the evening started to shake your hand and to thank you for coming out and participating. This is a great opportunity for us to have constructive dialogue on a number of issues. If you know anything about me and you've been around me for a while, oh, I'm pretty sure she said silence your phones just a second ago. If you know anything about me and have been to any of my meetings, you know that I love PowerPoint. I'm a PowerPoint guy. I speak through PowerPoint. So tonight, I got a little PowerPoint presentation that's gonna help get us started before we take questions, because I wanna—I wanna make sure that we set a foundation for some of the things that are happening in Washington, D.C. that you would not normally hear about on TV or at the top of the line news. No matter what news station that you watch or radio station that you listen to, sometimes you don't hear about all the things that we're actually doing or the process that actually is taking place. And I think that that's a really important place for us to start. Before I do that, I want to remind you that I love representing the first district of Texas. I really do. How many of you dealt with me when I was a county judge here in Smith County? I dealt with a lot of you as a county judge. We went around and did a whole lot of forums like this on veterans issues, road and bridge issues, on budget issues. So this is the kind of setting that I really enjoy because it's the kind of setting that provides transparency and accountability for elected officials, no matter what your viewpoint is. And Joanne, I was glad that you said that earlier, because regardless of the viewpoint, we want to be able to hear your voice and your concerns and answer your questions. We're gonna focus on the federal issues tonight. I don't really get into the local questions or the state questions. Those guys got enough for what they're gonna do, and our time is limited. So we're gonna focus on federal issues tonight, which is what you hired me to do, right? That's exactly what you hired me to do. So let's start with our update a little bit. I want to make sure that you know a little bit about what I do on my everyday assignment in Washington, D.C. and what committees I'm on. Joanne's already mentioned to you that I'm on the Ways and Means Committee, which is the tax writing committee for Congress. It oversees tax, trade, and about half of the healthcare issues. A lot of the healthcare issues go through energy and commerce. And I'll parse that out as we get through some of the questions. I'm sure some of that'll come up. But the Ways and Means Committee is the one and only committee that's actually mentioned in the Constitution. Pretty interesting fact. It's the first committee that was formed. It's the committee of jurisdiction, really, that is pushing what is the tax—what is your tax bill gonna look like next year? And it's really important to you. We're gonna get into the details and the weeds of that as we go along. I'm on three subcommittees: the Oversight Subcommittee, Social Security Subcommittee for Ways and Means. So we can talk about that. I'm sure we will. And Work and Welfare as well. Those are the three committee assignments—that subcommittee assignments that I have on Ways and Means. I'm also on the China Select Committee, which is—they call it a select committee because most committees in Congress are appointed by a large body, like a Committee on Committees, effectively, but a select committee is appointed by the Speaker of the House. The China Select Committee is an important way for us to push back on China's dominance or attempt to be dominant in the world. And we've gotta be able to do that. We're gonna push back in a lot of different ways. So I'll tell you a little bit about what I'm doing there. And then, most recently, the Speaker asked me to be one of five members of the Republican Party that's on a bipartisan co-equal committee, five Republicans, five Democrats, on the Ethics Committee. And that's really for us to self-govern our code of conduct that we actually approve. And we try to do that in a nonpartisan way to make sure that as people raise money and they spend money and they—and they're doing their travel, they're doing it in a way that fits with the rules in Congress. And so, when the Speaker came to me about that, that's one of those things that you don't seek out. But when he asked me to do it and said, "I need somebody judicious. I need somebody that will objectively look at all the facts and then do it—apply those facts in a nonpartisan fashion," I said, "I'm happy to do that for you, Speaker," because when the Speaker calls on you to fulfill your duty, you've got—you need to be able to do that for him. Let me tell you, some of the things that we're working on that I've actually introduced, some of the bills that I've introduced and co-sponsored that may be of interest to you or I think are very important issues that we need to deal with. One is on the Ways and Means Committee, the Family and Small Business Taxpayer Protection Act. You know, there's still about $80 billion out there that has not been spent yet from the Biden era that was intended originally for—you guys remember all those new agents that were gonna come out? It was intended for those agents and enforcement, but it was also intended for technology upgrades and for customer service, preserving intellectual—I mean, the information technology services to expedite the way we serve our customers instead of going after our taxpayers. And this bill actually says, "Hey, you know what? We need to—the money that's left over, we need to focus on just the information technology services and the customer service stuff. We don't need more enforcement on everyday Americans on their tax bill. It's too complicated the way it is. There's too much focus on that, and we don't think that's where the focus in D.C. needs to be." It needs to be to serve the taxpayer, not to punish the taxpayer. And so, we want to roll back some of that money that Biden put out there originally. Then another bill that we laid out there that's gone under the radar is this access to credit for our rural economy. This is a Randy Feenster bill. I like this bill, and so we got on it to help co-sponsor it because this provides access to capital—more access to capital for farmers in small communities, in rural communities across America. And don't you know, farmers are really the heartbeat of our nation, that middle part of our nation, and food security is national security. We've gotta make sure that our farmers are supported. We've got a bunch of—we've got—we've got some great farm credit institutions that provide lending to our farmers. This bill in particular, what it does is it opens up for banks to be able to do that a little bit—in a little bit better way and allows them to deduct some of the interest off of the loans they're making to farmers in these really small communities so that they can have a homestead and continue to keep their homes. We think that's really important as well. Much more on the Ways and Means that I'll talk about here in a second that's not up there. On China Select, I refiled my no dollars to the Uyghur Forced Labor Act. Does anybody know who the Uyghur peoples are? Yeah. If you don't know the Uyghur story, you really need to know the Uyghur story. I talked about this at our last town hall back in October, here in this room. I'm sorry? So, the Uyghurs in the Xinjiang region of China are really enslaved. And they're a Muslim people group that the Chinese use to—use as really slave labor. And then a lot of those products and services that come out of the Xinjiang region end up in the United States. And so, we do not want to support that slave labor that's coming out of China. We want to say to China, "There's a moral issue here, not just an economic, but a moral issue that is repugnant, and we need to push back on that." So, this says, "Hey, if the government's gonna enter into any contracts, it cannot do so with any—with any business that does—that gets their product or service out of the Xinjiang region of China that uses that slave labor." We also signed on to Chip Roy's Bill, Securing America's Land from Foreign Interference Act. Really important bill. We're hearing this at the state level, too, and we applaud the state guys and what they're trying to do to keep China out of our owning our land. And that's a really significant issue, particularly agriculture land, because as they buy up property, then they control more of the agriculture domestically that we have here to feed our kiddos and feed our nation. And that becomes—that becomes problematic. And so, they're also involved in buying up land near military installations. Fugger has a good bill on that that we were on last session, and then he's gonna refile it this session that'll say China doesn't—cannot buy land near a military installation. We think that's important as well. So, some of these—some of the other bills that I've introduced and co-sponsored this session include the Border Security Investment Act, which is one of the—it was actually the first bill that I filed in Congress. We sat around the table when I first got elected two years ago, and we said, "You know what? Border security back then, of course, was just a mess. And how could we take away the incentives for our people to come across the United States and do that illegally? How can we incentivize them to stay and go through the legal process?" Well, one of the ways is, a lot of folks will come over and they'll work and they'll send money back without ever paying taxes and everything's a cash transaction. And so, we said, "What we need to do is we need to stop that, and we need to provide a fee associated with any transfer back to these—to these countries." And so, that's why we—that's why we filed this particular bill. We also filed the Restore Patent Rights Act of 2025, which restores the right of patent owners to quickly block their infringers by getting an injunction. Now, why is this important in particular as it relates to your property? So, I'm really curious about the signs because I didn't know we had so many intellectual property experts in the room. But this intellectual property bill is really important to American ingenuity because when infringers—when infringers infringe on smaller companies' patents in particular, those smaller companies really don't have the right of redress, the way that they would like to have that right of redress, because there was an eBay opinion that took away almost an automatic right of injunction if you had a valid and enforceable patent, and it was found to be so after a trial. Once you got through that process before the eBay decision about 12 years ago or so, you actually could get a permanent injunction against that company that was infringing against you. Well, so after eBay, then it became really hard for you to be able to get that injunction. Well, that—that made it less valuable for you to come up with a new invention, because now you couldn't protect your patent rights quite as much. That bundle of rights that you had as it relates to—as it relates to patent rights really was diminished. So the fair market value of your innovation went down. We want to restore that. And as a result of that, actually, a lot of people began to go overseas and hold their patents overseas and seek redress from other courts, including courts in China. Now, that's something you don't typically hear about in the news, the nightly news. It's a real—it's a really technical, kinda deep issue, but we think that's really important. Also filed the Building Youth Works—Building Youth Workforce Skills Act, which is something that we had worked on last session as part of the WIOA reauthorizations. You may know what WIOA is, the Workforce Innovation Opportunities Act. It's what funds our local workforce solutions through the state of Texas. That's the bill that kinda sets the parameters and provides the funding for that. And in working through that process, we thought, "You know what? We need to make sure that we allow for workforce boards to fund skills training for in-school youth." How many in-school youth you know that need to start that training earlier and to get their skills built up so that when they get out of high school, if they decide not to go to a four-year college or university, they can—they can get a great job. We want to see that happen with them. So, we filed that back. The Prove It Act is another one that we filed last session that we refiled this session with Brad Finstad. We think that if the federal government is going to impose a regulation on somebody, that they ought to actually have to follow a 1980s law that says you've got to say what the cost is on that business for that new regulation before it goes into place. Well, about 75% of the time, the federal government doesn't do that, even though the law requires you to do that. So, why did we file this bill? Because this bill in particular will provide redress for those businesses. Is anybody in here a small business owner, by the way? Yeah. Man, I'm so glad. Because when—I bet you, you guys as small business owners do not have full-time compliance officers, do you? Federal—you bet—I bet you don't have full-time federal compliance officers that—you their whole job is just to comply with new federal regulations. And that's the same case with a lot of small businesses. So when the federal government decides to impose new regulations on you and your industries and your small businesses, that's—I think that needs to be something that only happens after a long, slow process, deliberative process, where we have understood what the cost is gonna be to that business owner. And so, this Prove It Act says, "Look, federal government, if you don't follow the law that says you have to do this, then we have redress. We can come and quickly file a petition and get that regulation undone until you walk through the process that's mandated by the law that's been there for more than 40 years." Super important. You'll also see up there, I've got Defund the Planned Parenthood Act of 2025. We're—should I? So, I'm very—I'm very proudly, very proudly pro-life, and that's something that's been a—been a real foundation for me for a long time. So, you know, it's interesting, when I got elected, when I ran for office, I actually used this particular portion. I used this particular portion. Then you must be in the wrong place, because—I—listen, I rep— I know. I was—listen, I was—I'm happy to—I'm happy to talk to you guys about this. I'm happy to talk to you guys about this. So, when I ran for office, I was very clear when I ran for office that I'm 100% pro-life, 100% pro-life, and happy to be pro-life. And the interesting thing about differences is, I certainly respect—I certainly respect the fact that you may have a difference of opinion, but I have a—I have a firmly-held—I have a firmly-held moral belief that life begins at conception. And so, as a result of my very firmly-held moral belief, you know, I'm happy to—I'm happy to talk to you guys. And I've—I've heard you, but I don't think you understand. So, we're gonna get to the questions in just a little bit. Happy to get to those questions. So, we—if you got a question, you gotta write it down. So, we're gonna get to those questions. So, let me—let me finish my PowerPoint presentation, and then we're gonna get to our questions. I mean, the sooner that I get through my presentation—the sooner I get through my presentation, then we can get your—get your questions. I would love to give you the facts of the things that I'm doing in Congress. And I want to talk about Ways and Means in particular here in just a moment. So, the Defund Planned Parenthood Act of 2025 is consistent with my pro-life stance and will be consistent with my continued pro-life stance in Congress. I'm proud about that because I think every life is created by God for an equal and eternal value and purpose in this life. And I think that—I think that starts at—I think that starts at— So, I think we've—I'm pretty sure we've figured out what your position on this, and I'd be glad to keep going in my slide, my PowerPoint slide. So, I also have the Anti-CBC Surveillance Act that— So, if you have a question, feel free to write it down. Anti-CBC Surveillance Act. Though—I know, and we're gonna get to it. So, you know, in Congress, let me just address—let me address the—I'm gonna address the colloquy that's not happening here, the really interesting behavior, because in Washington, D.C., I have a number of friends across the aisle that disagree with me on this issue, that we—that we talk about and debate these issues, but we actually do it in a very civil way. We do—it—we do it in a very civil way. And so— And so I've said from the beginning, when I started in Congress, that I'd plan to represent the first district of Texas with four things, four, four, four value systems. Effective statesmanship, steadfast principles, humble service, and bold action. I think how we behave in this life and how we go about our business actually is just as important as what we stand for and why we do it is even more so important. And so when I'm in Congress, and those of you that dealt with me on the, on the city level or the county level, you would know, when I'm in Congress and when I debate issues substantively with folks, I've actually never treated somebody the way you guys just treated me. And so we can have, we can have, we can have a, we can have a substantive debate, we can have a substantive debate, we can have a substantive debate in a very civil, in a very civil manner. And so, all right, so let's, let's go on. Anti-CBDC Surveillance State Act prohibits the Federal Reserve from issuing a central bank digital currency. I think it's really important, too. We don't want to see a central bank digital currency out there. We want that in the private sector. Government doesn't need to have anything to do with issuing those currencies. So I think that's important as well. And then our Protect Our Children Reauthorization Act to try to reauthorize some very important bills that protect our kids online. So that's a part of what I'm up to. Now, let's talk about the House budget. Let's talk about reconciliation because as, as I'm on Ways and Means Committee, we're going to get to those questions in just a second.
Many of us, many of us will stay as long as you want to watch, to your PowerPoint. But I suggest that we actually do the questions first. And find most of us
And a lot of, I suspect, a lot of, I suspect a lot of probably what you want to ask, I'm going to answer in some of my PowerPoint. So let me, let me go through the PowerPoint because this is really, really important stuff. Because if you don't, if you don't know about the House budget resolution and the process of reconciliation, you're going to miss out on a lot of important things that are happening this next year. Because this is, this is really important that we go through the reconciliation process. So this, yeah, I actually have two kids at home, too. I'd like to get back to it. So this House budget resolution that, that passed recently, this is important to think about because so many people have said things about the House budget resolution that are really untrue. And this House budget resolution that just passed in the last couple of weeks, what it does is it starts the reconciliation process. It kicks it off by saying to all the committees of jurisdiction, here are the things that we need you to do. Either you can reduce, you have to reduce for Agriculture Committee, reduce your spending by 230 billion, or for, or for example, when it gets to Ways and Means where I'm on, it says you can go up to 4.5 trillion dollars. Why? Because that's the cost of extending the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act provisions of 2017. And so we'll get to that question. It's a great question because as we, as we go through this process here, what we want to do is end up budget neutral, deficit neutral at the end of the day. We don't want to spend more money than what's coming into the government. That's what's happened for decades, right? That's what's happened for many, many years. That's why we're in 37 trillion dollars worth of debt presently, and so we don't want, we don't want that debt to continue. You see the amounts that are designated for each one of the committees of jurisdiction for them to actually come back then and do their work, which is what's going to happen now that we pass that resolution. And in the next month, we'll do all that work and then we'll go through that in a very public forum, put that out for debate on each committee, committee by committee. And then that goes back to, that goes back to the Budget Committee. And then they have more debate with the consolidated bills from every one of those jurisdictions, committees of jurisdiction. And then they end up, here's that process, then it ends up on the House floor, and then we have more debate on it. So there is tons of public debate ahead for each one of those issues. Here's what most people have said about the budget resolution, though, is they've said, you know what? You, you slashed Medicaid, you slashed Social Security, you slashed this or that in that budget resolution. And actually, the budget resolution does nothing but give numbers. And then those committees have to go through the, their work and figure out, how do they save that money? So that's where we're at right now. There's also, there's also a really important thing called the Bird, the Bird Rule, because when it goes over to the Senate, the way reconciliation works is it avoids the 60-vote threshold in the Senate. That's why we go through the process. But there's still some rules in place that will say, but you got to keep it constrained. One of the rules is you can't touch Social Security in the reconciliation process. Now, I suspect, I suspect that that's probably a shock to most of you because most of you may have heard that you think we are cutting some Social Security in this process. The interesting thing is that the Senate parliamentarian knows we can't do that. You can't even touch Social Security in the reconciliation process. And so you also can't get outside the jurisdictional bounds. You can't get into policy in the reconciliation process. You've got to stick with the actual numbers. Now, here's the So this is the problem we're trying to solve right here. We're trying to solve the annual spending problem and the overall deficit problem because as you can see, as you can see, the, the annual spending is having a, having a problem. We're way underwater and that would not be the case, that would not be the case if we, that would not be the case if we actually did what you have to do in your small businesses and you have to do in your families, and that is balance, balance the budget. So we don't, we don't want to see that happen here because we're about, take a look at that, we're a couple trillion dollars underwater. Now, I heard a couple of you say out there that, you know, a lot of the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act was for the rich. Let me go through a few statistics here that's really important for you to know. You would be, you would be surprised, you would actually be surprised at the impact if we do not extend some of those Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. Talk about a family of four in East Texas. There's a median income here of about $61,000 a year, statistically speaking in East Texas. That average, those are just statistics from, from, so six, sixty, a family making $61,000 a year would see a tax increase next year if we did nothing of about $1,142. So we're going to, we're going to keep going through this stuff and we're going to answer that. I believe in tax cuts, by the way, for everybody. I think the lower the taxes are, the higher your liberty is. And there is, there is So I'm, I'm pretty sure I'm like 15 or 30 minutes into this presentation, and so we're good, we're good, and we're going to get to those questions. There's a, there's an order of how we need to go about doing this. I want to give you some good facts because I bet you most of you have never seen that, right? Well, you know, ignoring the facts probably won't get us anywhere as we, as we get through our, our discussion tonight. A family of four, by the way, that, that was making A family of four that's making about $100,000 would see almost a $2,500 tax increase. That's just not something we want to see happen. Those small businesses that you guys mentioned earlier, you know, if you're a pass-through entity, how many of you do pass-through entities? About 90% of every entity is a pass-through entity in the United States. And for those that use pass-through entities, you're actually going to have about a double of your tax rate. You're going to go from 21% to 43% next year if we don't do anything. So we need to be able to provide you that money back so you can do with it what you want long-term. All right. I'll skip through, I'll skip through. These, these are actually numbers that you can check on your own and verify. And here's a great number for you right here. So one of the things that we've got to look at going forward to 2033 is this issue right here that if, if you look at any, any, anybody, Democrat, Republican numbers, it doesn't matter, by 2033, Social Security falls off a cliff because it runs out of, runs out of money. And so what you end up having to do is, at that point, there's an automatic reduction of benefits. We don't want to see that. We want to preserve, we want to preserve that. So it goes, that's right, that's what their graph is. So let me call out a little misinformation in both parties. And, and this is, I do it for both parties because I think what we're seeing is misinformation on both sides of the aisle. And so we, we want to make sure that we're being equal in our criticism here. And so I wanted to call out two things. One is, see these billboards on the left? The Washington Examiner has a great story about this, that you saw these billboards out there that were saying that the vote, this budget resolution vote that happened was a cut in Medicaid or Medicare or Social Security. And so billboards went up around the country about that. And they were, had to be taken down because once they were challenged with that, they realized that it was actually, it was actually potentially defamatory because there was no basis in fact. And so the Democrats actually, the Democrats actually took those down. They actually took those billboards down. Now, the other thing is, I'll tell you, is Republicans actually, or conservatives actually do a very similar thing. I saw this on, on my Facebook feed and I had to take a picture of it because on this particular thing that circulated around conservative circles, it shows the same vote and it says they voted for, that we voted to no taxes on tips and no taxes on overtime. And the truth is, that didn't happen. And so I was, I was curious how conservatives were circulating that misinformation while liberals were circulating a whole other bad set of information. So anyway, what, what we want to do What we, what we want to do is, well, besides being respectful, is to be honest about the conversations that we're having. So, all right. Race to Connect. Hey, guess what? I flew through that and skipped a bunch of my notes to cut it down short. If anybody had been here, yeah, anybody had been here in, in October, you have seen me with about an hour and a half, I think I went about an hour and a half with my PowerPoint presentation in, in, in October. Because it's really important. All right. So let's, let's take a few questions. Joanne, do you want to, you want to take some questions?
Sure, I need to move your stuff out of the way because I got all these cards here. Okay, the first question. If the Department of Education gets dismantled, it will increase the size of the caseloads of students that each teacher has per class period. If we can expect the volume of classrooms to go up, how can we expect the pay of our teachers to go up when their paychecks mostly depend on federal funding? Also, this is the second part to that, how can we ensure that each student receives quality education when one-on-one time with the teacher will be almost impossible to manage?
Well, I'm going to, I'm going to shock you with this answer, but you know, the Department of Education didn't come around until 1980. Do you guys remember that? Before 1980, we did not have a federal Department of Education. And guess what? Our education worked a whole lot better. The, the, the topic of, the topic of education, I was on Education Workforce Committee last session. So I'm pretty sure you asked me to answer your questions and I'm pretty sure I'm trying to answer your questions. So the Department of Education at the federal level really does not help your, your students at the local level. More local authority and more state authority would be better. And in fact, it's the state's responsibility to take care of education. I'm actually proud to have a bill that calls for the liquidation of the Department of Education over time. We filed that bill this session. We worked on it for about two years. My kids go to public schools. I graduated from public schools. I'm proud to support school systems. I worked in school for a while. My wife was a teacher. I've got, we've got all kinds of connections to education. And so we love educating students. I started an education foundation with a friend of mine for a local school district. Why? Because we believe in what teachers do, whether or not they're in private schools or charter schools, or whether or not it's homeschools, we believe in what they do or public schools. And so, but education, education is fundamentally a state issue. And so what you don't want to do in Texas is you don't want California to tell Texas how to run their, their schools. And the way that happens, listen, the way that happens is only happens if the federal government is in the middle of it. Because those policies come up from states like California, they go to DC, and people in DC somehow think that they can tell everybody else what to do. I would rather give that authority back to you at the local level. I would rather give it back to you at the state level so that you guys can figure out in your school districts what is best for you. And I'm, I'm kind of, I'm always curious by people that want the federal government to do more because frankly, the federal government never gets it right. So these, these fears, these fears about teachers and these fears about, these fears about what would happen in the classroom are unfounded fears. The Department of Education, if it went away tomorrow, would be a good thing for your
The president recently stated, we cannot give everyone a trial. It would take 200 years. Suggesting due process isn't feasible for deportations. Simultaneously, his counterterrorism advisor, Sebastian Gorka, implied that Americans advocating for due process are aiding and abetting terrorists. Do you agree with these stances? Should defending constitutional rights now be considered a criminal act?
Well, listen, um
I'm a Democrat. I don't like to hear what you're, those important things that you have to say because of your comments.
That's sexist. Let's get back to Maria.
So listen, on the immigration issue, I'm really glad to see President Trump actually exerting the authority that needs to be exerted to enforce, to enforce the, enforce the rule of law and make, and there will be due process along the way, but to enforce, enforce the rule of law. Because I tell you what, the millions of, the millions of people that have come across, the millions of people that have come across our borders in the past couple of years, and for years, as we talked about it in the last administration, people would say, oh, but you know, Congress needs to do something. President Biden can't actually do something about that. The truth was, we needed, we need, we need a strong executive that will actually enforce the rule of law and the rules that are on the books. And that's what we're seeing right now. So I applaud the efforts to try to get us back to a, a rule of law situation and to follow the immigration process.
In North Tyler, there are numerous railroad tracks and unused and overgrown. There have been attempts to contact Union Pacific, but they are not helping. What can you do and are you willing to help because this is a community I saw?
Yeah, if it's a need to contact Union Pacific on railroads about that issue, if you haven't been able to get through, somebody just needs to call my, whoever asks that question, just call my district office and we're, we're happy to try to facilitate that communication to UP.
I didn't get to hear from the due process. Like, I'm seriously extraordinarily concerned about when is it okay for them to not get due process?
That, listen, the Supreme Court is going to make sure that the, the rule of law is followed in this situation. And so that due process exists. On the UP question, you guys make sure that, just go to my district office and we'll help facilitate that, that conversation.
Congressman Moran, thank you so much for meeting with us. I know that a lot of reps aren't willing to hold town halls and I appreciate your time. My son Jamie is in prison here in Texas. He is serving a three-year sentence, but he did not receive the death penalty. However, he, however, he is in conditions that Judge Robert Pittman recently ruled are unconstitutional. During the summer, temperatures reach 110 to 120 degrees in his cell. My son and the other inmates have no AC and are forced to regularly flood the toilets in their cells in order to lay in that water on their concrete floors, just so they can regulate their body temperatures. Bills addressing this are pending in hearings. Could you please help us?
Well, that's an, as an Article III question, the court that's overseeing that particular criminal case is the one that's going to have to deal with that. That's a separation of powers issue that we're not going to get involved in that.
Do you feel that you are upholding your oath of office?
Yes.
Congressman Moran is a former student at Texas Tech with a bachelor
Congressman Moran is a former student at Texas Tech with a Bachelor of Arts degree in Russia. And having spent time in Russia, you shared in a C-SPAN interview following your election to Congress, you expressed your support for Ukraine and of NATO. Now that we have a new administration, what is your current stance on continuing this support? If so, what types of support would you recommend?
So as I understand the question, what we want to be able to do is support the President in trying to reach a, a deal to make this war go away between Ukraine and Russia. And so we're, we're happy to answer these questions right here. So. When, um. So in, in regards to this question right here, and. In regards to this question right here, um, yeah. We're talking about the, the Ukraine-Russia issue. We're really, really happy that President Trump is trying to bring resolution to that and hoping that that wraps up as quickly as possible. So I think that probably answers that question.
How do you justify funding the school voucher bill when money, when many counties in Texas have no private schools?
The question was about school vouchers, which is a state issue. It's a state legislative issue, not a federal issue. And so that's a, that's a state issue.
What steps, what steps will you take to ensure freedom of the press?
Well, I think that we have plenty of freedom of press in this country. We've seen just a plethora of, a plethora of outlets that can, can engage on a number of different platforms. And so the, you know, I know there's, there's a change going from our traditional press to, to more of the social media outlets, but I see a lot of free press, even from just independent press.
Okay, what line does President Trump have to cross before you say you know?
So like, you know, I think that we have, we, we have been very adamant about when we think that there is a problem and, and if you guys watched my, if you guys watched my "I," how about "I," not a "we," I have been very adamant that when I see something I think is, is against the rule of law, against separation of powers, we're going to, we're going to speak out. About two weeks ago, we were, we were in a hearing about two weeks ago in our Ways and Means hearing, and we pushed back on what, what President Trump was doing in some areas and made that clear. And so on, on, on trade issues in particular, I've, I've said very vocally that I, I like, I like the, the short-term negotiation strategy that's engaged, but the tariffs as a long-term economic policy, I think there's some real, there's some real concern there. And so I'm hoping that, and I believe that Trump will be successful in his, in his strategy here, bringing the other countries to the table, renegotiating, renegotiating those deals, getting reciprocity across the board, making sure that we get treated fairly here, our ag products get treated fairly across the world. There's so much that we have overlooked in the past decades that's gone on. Trump is resetting the world stage on that, the economics. We think that that's a good thing. There's a little, there's a little bit of, and, and our, by the way, our allies are not abandoning us. I've talked to, this is, this is interesting to me because I, I talk, I talk frequently to ambassadors from countries of our allies, and I can assure you, they know that they have been mistreating us in a number of economic ways and they are, they're going to come to the table and there's going to be some better trade deals for the United States.
Okay. This person says, "I am very concerned about the drastic cuts in foreign aid, food and vaccines from USAID. I want to know how Congress is going to restore these needed funds and also protect the work of the National Institutes of Health."
Well, I, I got to tell you, I mean, with, with a lot of what you've seen out there in these agencies, we, we are going to have disagreements on what should be, money be spent on and what it should not be spent on. And these are two in particular that I, that I think we are going to disagree on because there's been, there's been some really horrible findings that we should not be spending monies in certain areas. Now here's what's happening when we talk about the agencies and the revamping is, it's kind of like, it's kind of like spring cleaning. In order to do some, in order to do some spring cleaning, you gotta, you gotta take stuff out of the garage, you gotta, you gotta sweep out the whole garage, you gotta look it all over. And there's a bunch of stuff that needs to go to the dump, and then there's a bunch of stuff that is good that you can put back in once you do a verified free, uh, cleaning. Well, that's, that hasn't happened. Democrats and Republicans both, they just sweep around things, but they don't actually get a deep clean going. And what we're seeing now is a deep clean in these agencies. When you see it resettled, I think you're going to see a lot of the good stuff put back in and the bad stuff back out to the dump.
How will you help women be able to afford passports if they need them as part of the required documentation needed for married women under the SAVE Act?
Yeah. Well, this is a false ACLU, ACLU talking point. It's, it's a rabbit, it's a rabbit trail, it's a rabbit trail that is throwing up trails of things that are not going to happen. And so I, I did read the bill. And so I think your fears in that regard are not well-founded. That's not going to happen. We were glad, we were really glad to support the SAVE Act because frankly, we don't need people that are not citizens of the United States voting in our federal elections. They should not be voting.
Who would be responsible for determining which forms of identification are valid and how will those people be trained?
Yeah, it's actually listed in the bill which forms are valid and those people, those people already are in place. They just have to follow the rules according to what the bill's going to say or what the bill has laid out for the different identifications.
Thank you for sponsoring legislation to protect the Uyghurs. What are you doing to protect the rights of American citizens and legal residents and immigrants?
Oh yeah. So, you know, we really work on behalf of you guys here in, in the Northeast Texas region, the First District of Texas, to make sure that you get more liberty and to protect your rights. I think that, uh. Yeah, more liberty. Well, one of the things more liberty means is more money back in your, in your pocket. Because we want you guys to be able to make the decisions on, on where that money goes and what you do. And so one of the things I talked about up here that you guys shouted over me about, about rights was the patent rights. How many of you in here have good creative ideas? I mean, it's a, it's a really good creative idea. And as a result of protecting innovation, which we're one of the leaders in Congress in intellectual property rights, that kind of stuff, I think goes a long way. We also filed a bill called the No Fake, we, we were one of the original cosponsors of the No Fakes Act. And it says that you have a personal property right in your image and in your voice. Well, that's protecting you. It's a protection for you. And that's the kind of thing that we've seen some states do, but the federal government, government needs to do that. So those are just two specific examples of how we're protecting your rights. Go ahead.
Do you support the United States exiting NATO?
Yeah, I've, I've been answering the questions. And so this question here is about whether or not we need to exit NATO. I do not, I actually do not support us exiting NATO. Go ahead.
People here want to have questions, they would want to have their questions answered. We don't care what's on the, on the, on the.
Well, sir, I care because all these people wrote their questions down. All these people, no. Doge, Doge and Trump claim to have found billions of fraudulent payments. Fraud is a crime. Please provide a list of indicted fraudsters unless the indictments are sealed such as public records.
Yeah, I think that those, those things will come out as we move through the process. We'll, we've already got a list of the, the money that's, had been identified, but fraud is, is a crime and the, the law enforcement portion of the executive branch will move forward with prosecuting those that have engaged in fraud. One of the things that we did just a couple of weeks ago was we passed a law and we passed a bill that's going to get signed into law that extends the statute of limitations for those that have committed fraud related to monies that went out during COVID. Well, that timeframe was coming up and that, that statute of limitations was going to end here in a couple of weeks, but there were still a, a bunch of cases, more than 100,000 cases out there. So we extended that statute of limitations out for another five years because the executive branch, which is the law enforcement arm of government, right? That's what they do. They enforce the law. That, they need to go after those folks. They need a little bit more time. It's unfortunate that President Biden's law enforcement folks didn't do that. They were focused on other things.
Do you believe that Kilmar Abrego Garcia should be returned to the United States?
I think that, I think that process is going to, that process is going to work itself out through the courts. And so when it works out, then I'm confident that our Supreme Court is going to make sure that the rule of law is followed and that the appellate process ensures that he gets the due process that he's due.
As a member of the Ethics Committee, will you support the bipartisan bill that would stop Congress members from trading stocks while holding office?
Yeah, I've actually already got all of those. And by the way, I don't trade stocks and I haven't since I've been in Congress and I'm, I'm happy to support that bill.
Why has Congress surrendered their Article I role in setting tariffs to the President? And number two, why has Congress resorted to trickery and gimmicks to pass the extension of the failed 2017 tax cuts?
Well, there's, there, I can assure you, there's no trickery or gimmicks to it, to extending the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. I showed you the process earlier. It's a very extensive process and it's a very transparent process. And in order to get something actually passed through, you have to go through a number of different steps. What was the first question? Uh, I want to get the first question. Oh, on the, on the Article I powers on tariffs. So you guys probably saw the executive order was issued. There's some different sections that give the, the President authority. Section 232 is one that Biden and Trump both used for a number of years on steel and tariffs. But there's a law called IEPA, which is emergency powers to the President to be able to issue orders like this as well. And so that's how he had the executive authority to do that. Long-term, if they stay, if they stay in place, if they stay in place long-term, I think you're going to have to see congressional action on that. And I hope that we have a chance to be involved in that. And right now in the, I know that we're going to, when we get to that process, but when we get to that process long-term and the short-term, IEPA provided the authority for him to do that.
Why did you allow the Department of Education to be defunded? This affects me and other disabled people from getting the help and education we need and people who rely on free lunches may star from not being able to afford food.
Well, see, this is unfortunately, unfortunately, the question, the question doesn't understand the facts of what's actually going on because it hasn't been defunded. The, the programs, if you look at the executive order, by the way, if you look at the executive order that President Trump signed on the Department of Education, it says, according to what the law is presently, he wants to get rid of the department, but those programs actually are, are continuing and they haven't been defunded. As you know, as you know, the appropriations happen through Congress and that appropriation hasn't changed. Now, I told you earlier, thanks, and I'm, and I'm very forthright and very honest with people about long-term. I think there needs to be a weaning off of the federal government on this. The state needs to pick up, the state needs to pick up the, the vacancy there and then school districts will not have anything that they have to worry about. Give them a long runway to plan for, but the federal government, here's what, what happens is, the federal government gives you monetary strings and then they want to send you policy that is contrary to what you want in your local school district. And so why would you, why in the world would you want that? I don't know why you would want that long-term. I think you would want liberty there.
What are you doing to address the FDA's halt on milk testing and that food and health safety standards are upheld?
Yeah, that's, that's outside of my committee jurisdiction, so I don't really know a whole lot about that issue. I'm focused on the tax policy and the trade policy stuff that we've been talking about. That really goes under the ag committee, so.
President Trump posted on Truth Social yesterday that courts should not be playing as referee in his deportation efforts. He said, "We cannot give everyone a trial." Do you support this? As an attorney, you understand the constitutional right to due process. How does one defend or prove their immigration status or guilt innocence without due process?
Again, I think this, I think the Supreme Court is going to ferret this out and make sure that, that whatever due process is due to each one of those individuals and their individual circumstances. And, and there are many different circumstances that the Supreme Court is going to make sure that that due process is followed in the manner that it needs to. And so we, we're going to support that.
As a member of the House Ethics Committee, do you support an investigation of whether or not insider trading occurred by House members as a result of President Trump's tip-off to buy stocks?
Well, we can start with Nancy Pelosi. She's probably where we need to start.
Do you believe homegrown criminals should be housed in a different country?
The question is, do you, do you believe homegrown criminals should be housed in a different country? I think, I think whatever the law permits on housing of criminals, we need to engage in. We've got a number of people that are breaking the law and they need to, they need to have the punishment that's due to them for breaking the law.
Do you believe in the three branches of government and what will you do if Trump defies SCOTUS orders?
So I do believe in, in the three branches of government and I, my hope is that, and my belief is that what we're going to see is, we're going to see appropriate powers in both the legislative, the judiciary and the executive branch. And there will be, there will be a balancing and checks and balances that, that happen. But the process, listen, the process takes time to go through with the Supreme Court, as you guys know. And when we, when we honor, when we honor the authorities of the, of the other branch and make sure that we all stay in our own lane, things work out much better. I would, I would tell you that over time, I said this when I was on the campaign trail, it doesn't matter if you're a Republican or a Democrat, folks that get elected to office in, in the executive branch love to exert as much authority as they can. Both Democrats and Republicans do that. And we need to push back and make sure that they stay in their lane and we stay in our lane and the judiciary stays in its lane as well.
Please share the times and the issues that you would reach across the aisle and compromise with Democrats. And what can you do for a retired Texas public school teacher who is living on a very modest teacher pension and who is deeply concerned about what is being done to the Department of Education?
Yeah, so we, we actually already passed last year the, the WEPGPO fix. There were two fixes that were up and that actually impacts. I supported, I supported the one that was appropriate and I, I actually opposed the one that was the $300 billion solution instead of the $30 billion solution. The $300 billion solution swung the wrong way. And I was very adamant about having to do, because if you look at how the formulas played out, people were going to get paid more than what they were due. The $30 billion solution actually fixed the problem. So we actually addressed that last year. I wouldn't expect that to come back up.
Will you support higher taxes on the wealthiest group and individuals? What steps are being taken that basic human rights are being upheld with detained migrants?
So listen, I, I think lower taxes for everybody and everybody. Because it provides you more liberty. I actually, I provided you some statistics earlier and I tried to provide some additional ones about how the impact was from the 2017 Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. And most of the positive impact occurred from the working person, for the working families, those that were under $200,000. And so we want to continue to support that. You know, we often forget that it's, it's the small business owner that's driving the economy. We want to support that growth in small businesses. And so the number one thing that, the number one thing that we can do, you know, I, I kind of have to laugh at, at sometimes that when, when Democrats talk about supporting wealthy, because you know, a lot of the IRA tax credits that went through the Biden administration. know, a lot of the IRA tax credits that went through the Biden administration, did you know that some of those clean energy credits, there were 90% of those that went to companies with a billion dollars of revenue or more in a year? Now, that certainly didn't go to the working man at all. And so we want to keep taxes low for everybody.
Your small business initiatives are commendable, but if Donald Trump pursues a pro-private equity agenda, small businesses will ultimately be at odds with and at risk from private equity goals. The coming economic collapse will create record small business bankruptcies and foreclosures. How will you protect small businesses when capital markets dry up like they did in 2008?
Oh, you know what? You give them back more money. And you know how you do that? Section 199A, which is set to expire, and if you don't know what section 199A is, talk to your accountant about this because for small businesses, this is critical, really, really critical. So small, I'll define it in this way. If you are a pass-through entity, which means if you're a sole proprietor or partnership in LLC, an S corporation, doesn't matter what size you are from revenue, if you're one of those businesses and most of those are small businesses, however you want to define it, if you're one of those pass-through entities that files taxes in that way, what happens is there's a qualified business deduction that is under section 199A that gets your tax rate, effective tax rate down from 43% to 21%. And if we don't do it, if we don't do anything between now and next year, if we do not pass a Tax Cuts and Jobs Act extension, then those of you that have a pass-through entity, your actual effective rate moves from 21% to 43%. That is not, that is not the way to support small business. And the C corporations are, already have their 21% locked in. So those are the large corporations. So we want to make sure to protect the small business owner and continue section 199A and actually make it permanent so your taxes remain low. I guarantee the people in this room would not want to see their taxes doubled if you're a business owner.
You are a Republican, but your life is more than just the GOP. Your values are unique. Even in the ultimate alliance of marriage, each partner has their own differences. In politics, there are party alliances, but you are an individual. When your convictions, preferences, and party collide into a conflicting decision, does the Constitution overpower your own personal convictions? Calm our fears tonight, we are scared.
So I said from the time that I started running for office that I made my decisions based on principles, that's constitutional and moral principles, and I think those two align. Our Constitution was founded on a Judeo-Christian ethic. And that's, that's the morality, that guides my decision-making process. And so I'm, those are consistent. And so my decisions will always be based on principle, but when it's not a constitutional or moral principle involved, and for instance, let's talk about, I mean, a lot of these tax provisions we talk about, it's not a constitutional or moral issue, it's just a practical issue. Well, then it's the preferences of the first district of Texas that drives my decision.
Do you support sending American citizens to foreign prisons as the president has suggested?
We've already answered that question that was answered earlier, that if the law, if the law permits it wherever the location is, then we allow them to go. We've got, we've got different options that are available.
Why is there such a push to privatize everything, our schools, water, transportation, even the postal service? Is this just about turning public good into profit for the wealthy? What protections do everyday people have when public services become private monopolies?
Yeah, you know, government is not the answer to everything. In fact, government tends to mess everything up. So the less government you can have in your life, I think the better off you're going to be. And I really would, I would love for you, like I said earlier, I would love for you to have more of your money back in your pocket so that you can make decisions on how you, how you spend that money.
Given the proposed cuts to energy and commerce, Medicaid of 880 billion over eight years, what are you doing to protect our most vulnerable population to ensure they continue to receive quality care with dignity?
Yeah, it's a great question because when we talk about the energy and commerce $880 billion that are out there, there's a lot of opportunity and options for them to get to $880 billion without cutting the benefits of Medicaid. And so when you actually, when you actually, you go line by line of the things that they're going to consider, again, that's not my committee of jurisdiction, but it's a very important issue, there's a lot of waste, fraud, and abuse that's in Medicaid. Let me give you some examples. Oh, so let me, let me give you some grace. Let me give you some examples. I'm going to come, I'm going to come talk to this guy right here because he wants to know the answer. So let me start with example number, let me start with example number one. You know, Biden actually changed, listen, Biden changed the rule. Listen, Biden changed the rule to check the eligibility. Listen to me. Biden changed the rule to check eligibility of Medicaid recipients. And what he did was instead of checking the rolls twice a year, he now, he said, "Let's do a rule in place that only checks it once a year." And so what was happening was, listen, listen, what was happening was people would either falsify their income or, listen, or they, or they said that they had it. There is lots of proof. They then would apply for, listen, they would apply for, I've got some very specific answers on this that I'm happy to give to you. Here's what they would do is they would apply for Medicaid. Sometimes they were appropriately eligible, but because it didn't check for a full year, if their income changed in month two or three, they stayed on those rolls for eight, nine, 10 months when they were not eligible. Now, listen, that drives, that drives the cost way up. And those people, those people are not qualified. So you can save hundreds of billions of dollars by just checking the rolls. The other thing that you can do, if you look at Medicaid as, as you know, as a cost-sharing program, let me give you some more, let me give you some more examples. Medicaid is a cost-sharing program between the state and the federal dollar, and the federal government. And instead of sending, instead of just having a blank check and allowing for the match to go up as high as it can, if we were to go back and say, "We're going to do it at a per capita and we're going to, we're going to make states actually be responsible for administering Medicaid the way they should," then, then that would actually provide the benefits that are needed, but the states would be accountable instead of doing like what New York and California do and that's just blow it out of the, blow it out of the water.
What can you tell us about the defunding of ACL? More specifically, will centers for independent living and their current level of funding remain intact? Who will oversee CILs?
ACL, help me with that. Who's, whose question is that? Actually, it says ACL, but is that somebody else's question? All right, so here's, I don't know specifically about that, that funding issue. I'm happy for you to call my district and office and we can track that down. Here's, here's one of the things that's, here's one of the things that's, I think, a difference of opinion probably between me and some of you guys is. Look, the federal government should not be the source of all the revenue for every good cause in this world. It should not. There's a lot, there's a lot of great causes in this world. One of the things that I say often to folks is, look, I want to give you liberty for a number of reasons. One is liberty leads to prosperity. And with that prosperity, then hopefully that leads to generosity. Because I actually want you guys to have more money in your pockets so that what you can do is say, "You know what? The, the group, the cause, the entity that's most important to me, here's where I'm going to put my dollars." And I don't, I don't think, I don't think the federal government ought to be, is not the savior for all of that.
As a practicing Christian, all, all of the deaths and resulting illnesses from cuts by Doge, USAID, Medicare, HHS, all departments that result in death are furthering illness. How do you deal with that as a Christian?
Well, we haven't seen those cuts and we haven't seen, like when you mentioned Medicaid right there, that hasn't, that hasn't happened. And so I would, I would be shocked by the premise of that question. We, listen, we value every life. The, I told you earlier that every life has equal and eternal value, in my opinion. And we, we want to make sure that we provide a government institution that allows for the institutions of economy and the family institution and the faith institutions to do those things that need to be done on the local community.
Doge now has access to our most sensitive data, including social security numbers and tax payment information. Now RFK Jr. is proposing an autism registry with private health info. How will you protect your constituents' data?
Yeah, I think privacy is a really big issue and we need to continue to make sure that the executive branch is following the law in all of their access to privacy. We've had already some hearings, we've already had some hearings in Ways and Means that this issue came up quite a bit. And so if you will, if you'll follow those hearings and those questions, you'll see that we are making sure that there is accountability when things get out of line.
Can you give us an update on the improvements in the military since President Trump put Pete Hexeth in charge?
Yeah, so one of the great things that Secretary Hexeth has done is, you know, he has, he's gotten rid of the DEI programs in the military. We want a military that is ready force, that is ready to fight and irregardless of what their race or their gender, it shouldn't matter, we want a strong fighting force. One of the things that he's also doing is investing more in particular shipbuilding. We are way behind in shipbuilding, so if you're talking about our military readiness, China can build about 100 ships to the time we can build three, thanks to the regulations and regulatory burdens that are on our shipbuilders. And so we want to, we want to restore the ability for us to build up our military and in particular our space force. If you look at the things that are happening around the world, the space defense issue is a really important issue.
We promised Ukraine that we would help them. Do you feel as though it was the right decision to pull aid from Ukraine? Also, why do we seem to be so aligned with Putin?
I've been, I've been, I've been very clear, even on TV in the last couple of months, if you guys watched any of the interviews with several stations actually here locally, that I believe Putin is in the wrong. He was the aggressor. He's the, he's the guy that we need to stand up against. We, I made that stance, I've made that stance clear and consistent since I've been in Congress and if you follow me, you know that. And that's nothing, that's not a secret out there. And we've had, we've had lots of discussions with a lot of people about that issue, both publicly and privately about that. You heard earlier on my biography that I have a Russian degree, so I have a little bit of an insight about Russia and things that they do. And I think that he is an aggressor that inappropriately has pushed against the rule of law and democracy, and I would like to see him put in his place.
If legislators must find 1.5 trillion in spending cuts, why does the legislation include increased limits for deficit and national debt estimates after 10 years of 50 trillion? Half of that amount to cut is in energy and commerce where social security is funded and managed in the Commerce Committee. Please promise no cuts to social security.
So I'll start with.
I actually had a curious question about that budget thing because it looked like there was, you're trying to reduce everything but two things, and I wasn't sure if I'm reading that right.
Oh, yeah. So, no, it's a great question. That's why I was trying to explain this because I know if you're not involved in the reconciliation process, it gets confusing. So what we want to be able to do is there's, there's, there's a, an overall like 1.5 trillion dollars in cuts over 10 years that we're trying to save. And then we want to make it deficit neutral in the reconciliation process. Ways and Means has this CBO score here of 4.5 trillion dollars because CBO has assigned that score as the cost of continuing the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. And we'll see, I'm sorry.
My question is, I thought we were broke.
And so that's why it's a deficit neutral. And actually what happens is it provides growth and it's deficit neutral because the cuts actually provide growth, which is what they did after 2017. When you, when you cut the tax, hold on, when you cut the taxes in 2017, in 18 and 19, we actually saw real wages go up faster and more than we had seen in more than 40 years. And, and that was a result of the cuts that came. So I'm going to, let me answer this question. I, I, no, I get it, but I want to honor, I want to honor the process here.
What are your feelings regarding removing the cap on social security wages? If not, what do you propose to save social security?
Yeah, so, and the last question mentioned social security too. By the way, it's not energy and commerce, it's, it's Ways and Means that has social security. And as I mentioned at the very beginning, during the reconciliation process, social security by rule cannot be touched. And so when you see all this process here, you can't touch social security in the reconciliation process. Long term, I mentioned to you, that's why I showed you this graph, this is really important. Long term, you have to find a solution to social security because we want to preserve it for those that have paid in it. You, you want to be able to do it. And in order to do that, before we get to 2033, we've got to start making decisions and have great discussion in the future years, but I can assure you this. The president has said, and I can tell you talking to my colleagues, we're not going to touch the social security benefits of people that are on them today. We're not going to do that. Nobody would do that. Nobody would do that. So, but what we need to do is for your kids and my kids and the next generations, you got, we've got to change. And we've got to, listen, we've got to change so that it's there when we get there and we retire.
What measures are in place to ensure adequate funds will be available to address the mental health needs of those with low income or are uninsured?
Yeah, so this is a very specific question on, on more generally healthcare-related issues, and that's why I talked about Medicaid benefits not going away. There's, the president has actually said that to us quite clearly, that he doesn't want to impact the benefits. We want, we want to cut out the things that, we want to cut out the things that, that shouldn't be there and make it more efficient, but for those that need that, we want to make sure that that's, that's there, including for mental health. And by the way, I was on the State Commission, State Judicial Commission on Mental Health and did a lot of mental health here in the county level. It's really important to me. I've spoken on that issue a number, for a number of years, and those that know me for the last 10 years know that I've, I've spent a lot of time in that area. It's very important that we attack it. I'll tell you, one of the things that I think gets overlooked in the mental health area is we need to make sure to preserve the institution of the family because the institution of the family will, will help to deal with those issues long term.
Are you concerned about how the world views America? Are you okay with Trump alienating our allies with tariffs and threats?
Yeah, again, I don't, I know that this is, I know that this is a liberal talking point. Listen, I know that this is a liberal talking point, but he's not alienating them because I talk to them. I talk to these allies. And I talk to a number of allies. I actually am, am the chair of an interparliamentary exchange between the Congress and the EU Parliament, so I talk with a number of particularly EU ambassadors and foreign ministers. And they recognize that there needs to, there needs to be, they don't, they don't feel like we're alienating them. They're, they recognize there needs to be a resetting and they've come to the table, "We're going to get it reset." And once it's reset, I think we're going to be good.
This is a similar question. President Trump's tariffs are killing the stock market and our retirement savings. Why won't you support the bipartisan Senate legislation for Congress to take back control of the tariff process?
So the advice I've given to folks over the past few months is relax, don't react because what we're seeing, what we're seeing, yeah, listen, what we're seeing is a tough short-term circumstance, but I hope that when we get through, and I believe when we get through, the resetting of the tariffs and the reciprocity of trade around the world. I like freer trade and I've said that pretty bluntly, that I'm a Reagan economics guy. And so I think when we, when we get back to, when we get back to reciprocity and having free trade with fair countries, I think we'll be better off.
Do you believe we should walk away from NATO?
I've already answered that, no.
How do you justify funding school voucher bills when many counties in Texas have no private schools? And how would these counties benefit from the bill?
So I told you earlier, it's, that's a state issue. The state legislature is dealing with the voucher system. You can talk to the Austin guys about that.
Do you agree with the Trump administration that the Supreme Court voted in their favor not? 9-0 to keep, oh, I can't see. Oh, yes, okay. In El Salvador's prison, when everybody knows that they voted...
We've already answered, we've already answered the Garcia question. And so, listen, I have great faith in the Supreme Court that they're going to uphold the rule of law. And it'll get worked, I'm positive it'll get worked out.
Please explain the legislation you voted for to begin the budgeting process that estimates that spending levels would contribute to an estimated national debt of 50 trillion.
Yeah, that's actually the same question from earlier that I answered and went back and answered your question on that. Hand me your card and I'll make sure it gets up here, okay? Yeah, hand me your card. There we go, thanks. All right, is what you're saying 5.4, 5 trillion in reduced revenue, more taxes over the long haul? No, 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 that's, that's not what I'm saying. Actually, it reduces the taxes, but, and unfortunately, the CBO, they put these scores on there, but truth is they're not real numbers, but the CBO has to give it a score. So here's one of the things that I, the analogy I gave earlier is, so for instance, think about this, if you lease to purchase a car and you get through the entire lease, at the end of your lease, you've purchased the car and then you go, then you go back and they say, well, you actually got to do it again. You're going to have to lease to purchase it. And that's what happened is we actually paid for those Tax Cuts and Jobs Act provisions in 2017, but because they're expiring under the rules, the rules say you got to quote "pay for them again." And that's why they assign a number, but it's, it's basically a ledger number. But they also say you're going to have about $3 trillion worth of growth as a result of continuing those policies, which is where we end up with a deficit neutral number. The, the 1.5 trillion in cuts and the 3 trillion in, in growth, thereabouts.
The trickle down, you're saying, you think that the trickle down is going to cause an increase in wealth in our country, which would then help reduce the deficit?
What we're, what we're saying is economic growth. And let me give you a couple of examples of that, because there's this thing called inversions, where country, companies decide to either go overseas or stay here. Before the 2017 Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, we had 28 inversions, where companies actually just picked up and said, you know what, we're going overseas. And then when the Tax Cuts and Jobs Act passed, since then, you know how many inversions we had? Zero. Because companies decided to stay here and invest here and have more jobs here. That's what we want to see. There were a couple of other, listen, there's, there's a couple of other, there were a couple of other provisions like FID and a thing called GILTI, which actually has to do with things, actually has to do with your intangibles. Like we talked about earlier, your intellectual property. Companies, even if they have their physical operations here, sometimes they hold their intangible property overseas. And so in the 2017 Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, we provided tax incentives for them to bring it here. And you know what happened? Our revenue went through the roof. Why? Because we weren't, we weren't, we didn't have those assets in the country to tax before. And because we lowered our rate, and it's about 13%, we said, if you'll bring your assets back here, you'll have a lower rate than what you're paying to another country. And as a result, revenues went up. And so that's the kind of tax policy that provides economic growth.
What are the chances of the recently introduced term limits bill ultimately being passed?
We, we actually tried to do this last session. I was a co-sponsor to that bill and it didn't pass out of judiciary. I don't know what will happen in judiciary this term as well.
You voted for continuing appropriations which cost taxpayers $3,193 per household. We didn't weigh in on it and didn't know what was in it. These omnibus spending bills should be broken into single items so the people have oversight. This is why we are bankrupt and $37 trillion in debt.
So I, I agree that we need to pass appropriations bills and not continuing resolutions. It's just not the way to go. It, it's, it doesn't help with our policy, with our long-term planning, particularly with our military, it's not good. Both Republicans and Democrats have failed in that regard in the, in the last 25 years. And so we actually do need to do appropriations more effectively and through the 12 bill appropriations process. I agree with that.
Oh, let's see, we're getting a lot more of these, a lot of our own tariffs left. Let's see, this might be different. President Trump's Tax Cut and Jobs Act gives the largest tax break percentage to the wealthiest of Americans with the most significant gains to those who make $450,000 and up. Middle-class families received modest relief while lower-income households saw smaller changes. How do you justify giving the bulk of tax relief to the wealthiest in this country?
Yeah, well, I disagree with the premise and I think those facts are wrong. I want to, I want to read you some, some statistics that I had, because I know this is, I know this is important to you. Let me, let me read you a couple of things that I had, had put in my notes here, and I'm going to, I may have to just dump my phone off right there. So listen to some of these facts. After the 2017 Tax Cuts and Jobs Act, wages grew by 4.9% in 2018 and 19. I told you that, fastest jump in 20 years. The lowest 10% of earners actually saw 50% higher wage growth than the highest 10% earners. Another fact, the top 1% now carries over 45% of the total income tax burden, which is the highest ever, while the bottom 50% pays less than it did before the 2017 Tax Cuts and Jobs Act. These are statistics that you can, you can verify. The real median household income rose by $5,000 a year immediately following the TCJA's passage. That's the largest increase in that short amount of time span. And then a household making the US median income, which is 80,000, I told you the, the median income for us here in East Texas is 61, could see a $1,600 increase in tax liability if these are not extended. That's for hard-working Americans, I think that's, that's just horrible and we shouldn't allow that to happen. In fact, three out of every four dollars of the tax cuts and Jobs Act provisions went to individuals and families, not to corporations. Those are just some facts. What's that? Whoops. Can't talk to my, can't talk to my water. Listen, by the way, if you're not on my newsletter, I would encourage you to do that. And we have actually used those statistics in our newsletter. Moran.house.gov is how you sign up for the newsletter. It just tells you what we're doing, what bills we file, what speeches we've given. It helps you guys know what we're up to in Congress. We take great pride in putting a lot of substantive information in there, including this, it's been in there before. I'll talk to my team and we can see if we can scoot it back in, in the next, in the next couple of months. How about that? I'm going to get through the written questions. I, I mean, I would love to engage, I want to, I want to honor the process here. A lot of people have asked questions here. Protect the United States. They're, they're here to protect the United States, the sovereignty of the United States.
These are all separation of powers. You've already answered those. Why do you believe Democrats are anti-family?
Well, I don't know that I've said that, but let me just tell you, I think that there is a traditional family unit, a man and a woman. Listen, that a father and a mother are essential to, to raising children. I think we have different roles. They're equal roles. And I think that traditional institution of marriage is important to our society and we need to support it.
I'm deeply concerned about the 381 books banned at the US Naval Academy to include topics on race and democracy. As someone connected to the military, especially the US Navy's officers, I find it troubling that future officers are being denied access to diverse ideas. Do you support these bans? And if not, are you going to ensure our service members receive a well-rounded, intellectually rigorous education that reflects the freedoms they are sworn to defend?
So I wasn't aware of that, actually. I, I'm not, I'm not in the, I'm not in the military first off, but listen, I sup, I support a full liberal arts education. I think, I think students, when they go to college, what they need to do is they need to learn to think for themselves, right? Would you guys agree with that? And they need, they need, they don't need professors telling them what to think, but how, helping them guide them as to how they need to think. I went to West Point for a couple of years and was glad to get that great education there. The Naval Academy, I don't know about that decision or about those books. So I think, I don't know that I can comment specifically on whether or not they should have, shouldn't have been taken out. But I really would love our students, particularly at the military academies, to get a broad liberal arts education so they can lead our, lead our military.
Marjorie Taylor Greene's amendment to HR 8771 prohibits funding of USAID. You voted against and cost the average household $378. These are NGOs who have been pocketing a lot of funds that have been misused funds found by Doge. And the money didn't go where it was earmarked.
So I, I answered a USAID question earlier, and, and this goes back to the analogy. There's been a lot of misuse of funds in that area, but I happen to think that we need to, hold, listen, I happen to think we need to exert authority across the world with economic power. And that means that there are a lot of the programs, what you're going to see in USAID, I think, is a lot of the programs, once it's about fully evaluated, back into activity and full action. Because when we talk about in particular programs around the world that help stabilize countries, they act, it actually provides a lot of national security for us here in the United States. And so those, you know, those countries with, in particular terrorist organizations, they thrive on, and they thrive on, on people that can't get food. They don't have, they don't have the ability to get basics. And so, you know, to the extent that we have appropriate activities in that area, you know, I support that and I've been pretty clear about that, but there are some pretty atrocious things that came out of USAID too, that need to get wiped out and don't need to go back.
What are we doing to fight CCP and Russian disinformation in our social media space? How does firing the head of the NSA and stopping cyber operations against Russia support this?
Well, we, what we don't want to do is we don't want to follow the, the track of the European Union in this regard, because there is disinformation and misinformation out there, no question, in particular from Iran and China and, and Russia. And that, that, what I call that axis of totalitarianism. But the moment the government begins to decide what is true and not true, is the moment that we get in a lot of trouble on both sides of the aisle. So I think, I think government has to be real careful about stepping in that realm to decide what is accurate information and what is not accurate information. And let the, if we, if we provide information, if we provide the institutions of commerce to get, to actually hold each other accountable in that, that's what's worked best for us. Europe has actually engaged in a misinformation, disinformation law that is, that is the government deciding what's true and what's not true. And I've told them, I said, you got to be careful about that because the next thing you know, government's going to be telling you the wrong thing. And it's true, you see that all the time.
I can understand why you might want to reduce the size of government to find a tax cut for average middle-class Americans, but why do we need to cut government services to provide a tax cut if the lion's share of those cuts go to billionaires?
Well, the lion's share doesn't, by the way, and those, listen, we're, we are underwater, we are underwater with all the services. Why? Because we've grown the influence of government in so many different areas where it shouldn't be. We need to, we need to reset and get back to where we are actually engaging in the core responsibilities. You know, when you look at, when you, when you look at this chart on the left right here, you'll see, you'll see that the major healthcare programs and social security and the other mandatory and the, the interest that we're paying, it takes up everything but about 27% of the, the stuff that we actually spend. And then if you count the military, by the time you count military and veterans, you're only dealing with about 10% left that's really discretionary that you deal with. And so we have a spending problem across the board. We're not going to fix our debt issue unless we actually attack our, our overspending. And that means we've got to clean some houses.
This is about small businesses and manufacturers in Texas. The new tariffs are going to make it very difficult for Texas businesses who manufacture local products with imported inputs, like imported upholstery on Texas-made furniture to sell their goods at competing prices. I've spoken with business owners who worry about the survival of the homegrown companies. What can you say to address this?
I can say I, I share the concern about that. And I mentioned that earlier about my, my tariff stance. I actually had a really long, good discussion yesterday with a business owner in the First District of Texas that does the manufacturing of this type of item that you're talking about. And we talked about the difficulties of the supply chain and the, actually, the prices and the uncertainty around acquiring the supplies that, that are needed. And I, and I understand that. I told you guys earlier, I'm a guy that, I'm okay with the short-term negotiation strategy, but long-term economic policy from putting tariffs in place, we know tariffs is just another name for tax. And the, the consumers are going to pay the tax in the long term. And so we have communicated that. I communicated that in open hearing about two weeks ago with the US Trade Representative, Ambassador Greer, and did that unabashedly and, and did that because I think that's the right perspective to take and that's the right voice we need to have in this moment on that issue.
Secretary of Defense Hexeth has made several controversial decisions and statements that raise concerns from politicizing military culture to pushing ideology that some believe threatens readiness and morale. How do you see his leadership aligning with the values and standards expected of our armed services?
Yeah, I think, I think actually he's providing leadership that is going to get us militarily ready for, for combat. What you've seen over the past, what you've seen over the past four years is, you've seen, you've seen a military that's devolved into DEI-focused issues. And we need, we need military leaders, we need, we need military leaders that are focused on military readiness and preparing for combat. That's, that's the whole point of having a military.
The Trump administration is targeting news stations, which is free speech, and the Supreme Court rulings on, passed rulings on free speech.
I, I missed the question, I'm sorry.
It's, it's about the Trump administration quashing free speech by targeting news stations. I think, I think that's in the White House briefing.
I answered that question earlier, frankly, I think that's the, the, the traditional news stations of the old, just whining about not having a seat at the, at the White House briefing.
Okay, how do you feel about the new global realignment under Trump within a long time, a longtime enemy of democracy, human rights, and world peace as Russia is?
Yeah, I answered that question directly earlier too, that I, I think Russia is the aggressor, was in the wrong and morally is the, the wrongdoer in this case and frankly needs to be punished significantly. And, and I've, I've actually been very vocal about this. I've been very vocal about this for a couple of years.
Okay, should president, should the president be able to unilaterally impound funds authorized by Congress?
I'm missing that question too.
Should pres, this president be able to unilaterally impound funds authorized by Congress?
Well, he, he hasn't, and what happens is, and what you're going to see in the next month is what's called a rescission. So when, when Doge actually identifies these things that need to be cut, what they do is they refer it to, they, they refer that to the department heads, but the executive branch actually has to put together a rescission bill to send to Congress for us to rescind that funding before it's actually quote "defunded." It's still out there until we rescind it. So it's got to go through the legislature. I think you'll see that probably in the next two months.
How will Congress pay for this?
That was my question, but I had a couple of other facts that I wanted to...
Okay, well, I, I'm going to let you, would you come up here, please sir, and read them? Because I'm, okay, that'd be great, just go right ahead, this one time.
The handwriting is really small, so. The handwriting is really small, so.
... attorney, all right? Okay, so, it's a fact that the East Texas Food Bank just lost $750,000 in $360,000 pounds of food because President Trump unilaterally decided to cut that funding. That's a fact. Second fact, it's a fact that the state of Texas just lost $877 million in grant money just in the, in the last two weeks for public health, including $97 million earmarked for measles outbreak. That's a fact. That money had been allocated by Congress for those purposes, okay? And the other thing is, there's been a lot of Social Security changes, not directly affecting benefits, but affecting how those benefits are delivered. Like, for example, I called your office on this, and I never got a reply. I have a client in my business, I have clients that are shut-ins, they, they're computer illiterate, the only way that they can reach out, they can't maybe get to the office, the only way that they can reach out to get their benefits and things is pick up the phone. So, there was a very aggressive policy that just got walked back, and you know what that was, about the, about the, but what's left is that if people want to change their bank account or apply for benefits, they have to, they can't do it by phone anymore.
Yeah, and I-
And one other thing, if I can, please.
Sorry, go ahead, I figured that.
I've got, I've got clients that, whose employers stole their 401K money and their IRS tax payments, and they recently went here to the U.S. Attorney and the FBI, and they sat down with them, with the Department of Labor, an FBI agent, and U.S. Attorney. And what their answer was, there is evidence of criminal activity, but because of the manpower cuts we've had to our agencies recently, we can't handle this case. So, my question then is, these funds for the people, these funds for Social Security, these funds for the food bank, these funds for the state of Texas, were all appropriated by Congress? And so, my final question was, don't even use the word "impound." What business does the President have in deciding unilaterally that he's going to decide what money should and shouldn't be spent, when that's your job?
Again, we're on the, we're on the very front, great questions, we're on the very front end of that resetting on a number of spending items, and I think you're going to see some of it, as you said, some of it was already pulled back, some of the orders that were issued were pulled back, and I think you're going to see more of that as we understand how it all falls out. Let me address the food bank, first of all. Anybody that's known me for a while knows that S. County Judge, I mean, I did a lot with the food bank, a lot with the food bank, and we really loved, we really loved the food bank, and we supported them in a lot of ways. The, most of, and I would say all, but I don't know for a fact, but I think at least most, I think it's all, of the money that was taken away from the food banks around the nation, had to do with two Biden-era programs that are not very, not very long old. And so, here, listen, here, no, the point of that is, it's not like this, it's not like the funding, and we need to figure out, we need to figure out how to support our, listen, I'd like to answer this, in particular with the food bank, it's something close to my heart. I would really like to figure out, how do we make sure that we are cutting where we need to cut and saving where we need to save? And no question, that process takes a while to go through, that's why I used the example earlier of, listen, that's why I used the example earlier of pulling everything out of the garage and looking at it, and some of it goes back and some of it doesn't. So there's a timeframe associated with that. But, there is, there is a need, there is a need for us to recognize that the federal government is not the answer to every single problem in our country. And the federal, listen, as good a causes as we have in East Texas, the federal government cannot fully fund every great cause. And so, what I really, what I think philosophically is, we need to be able to, we need to work through with that, with them specifically, because that issue's close to my heart as well. But then we also need to recognize that if we are actually going to get to a deficit-neutral place and not keep growing our deficit, that we're going to have to cut in some areas. And we might start with those things that came in most recently, because those are the things that probably need to go out most quickly.
Do you support the pardoning of the January 6 rioters who were convicted of violence against law enforcement officers?
So, what I said, what I've said before on this J-6 question is, is the same answer I'm going to give you today, and that is, I support the equal application of the law, and what you saw in the last administration was not the equal application of the law, and in fact, there were a lot of folks that got sent to prison under J-6 that should not have been sent to prison. So, and what we saw is very similar, we saw very similar activity, we saw very similar activity on the other side, like BLM protesters, and those folks were not prosecuted. So, if you have equal application of the law and not one group targeted over another target, that's what, that's what I want to see happen. So, I supported the pardons because I thought it got us back to where we needed to be.
Okay, these are the last two. How long can you ignore your conscience? Do you feel you're defending the Constitution, and do you feel that you're holding, upholding your oath of office?
Yeah, I do, I know, listen, I know we have sincere differences of opinion here, I know we do, but I sincerely believe I'm upholding my oath of office, that we're defending the Constitution, that we're doing the thing, that the things in Congress that reflect the principles and the values of East Texans, I feel humbled and privileged to, and actually, to the comment, to the comment on the front row, it's not just the conservatives, you heard me actually say things tonight, I gave you answers, on questions that were contrary to what the President might take-